Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before I take the roll, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. This past week, this community lost Jerry Baumhiller, a longtime business owner, active with the Chamber of Commerce, a leader in our Rotary Club, and just a really outstanding human being. So I'd ask for a moment of silence as we remember Jerry Baumhiller. Thank you very much. Okay, present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Burgoyne, Girbaugh, Rhodes, and Mayor Protem Tahr. I know that, or I knew that in advance of tonight's meeting, Mr. Roth would be absent. I do not know about Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. From staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant Superintendent Skull, City Treasurer Bennett, Police Chief Rennick, and I know Deputy Treasurer McDonough is also here this evening. For the rest of you who are present, if you would please sign in the back, we would greatly appreciate it. I will at this time seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended. There are several additions this evening. The first of which will appear on the consent agenda, which actually, well, I'll mention it now, but we'll get to it when we get to the consent agenda because from communicating with Mr. Burgoyne, I understand there's a number of items that he would like to see removed from the consent agenda, but this is just a correction. On motion C-14-127, acknowledgement of receipt of an April 8, 2014 memo from Christine Johnson to accept her resignation from the EDF, LFA, and TFA. She was not on the LFA board, but she was on the EDC board. So please strike LFA and insert EDC. You'll see some additional verbiage on new business item 14-125. That's highlighted. Motion, or new business item, excuse me, 14-128. You have a new supplemental in front of you, an addendum dated today, June the 2nd, which we'll of course refer to when we get to that particular motion. And then Mr. Campbell distributed, which was at your desk this evening, some documentation related to new business item 14-125, the purchase of Bennett Street property. Mr. Burgoyne?
Also, I'd like to add to the discussion, non-union employee contract language. For discussion, I know it's coming to us next week, but I just wanted to say something now.
Okay, that will appear after downtown parking. Are there any other amendments, additions, or corrections to the agenda this evening? No, then I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rhodes. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Jim Roth.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Burgoyne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We have two presentations this evening, the first of which is from Darby Colano from Reinhardt Realtors regarding the Monroe Street property. Please, thank you for being here.
Thank you. We received a letter of intent and from AHAP, National Housing Corporation, and we have responded back to them. It was a start, and we're waiting to hear back from those responses. We responded to the buyer's agent. I think everyone has seen the letter of intent. Okay. So we responded, we had a, like I said, it was, it's a start, so we responded to them. I've also talked with some builders in the area, and I think our focus is shifting for that property from more of a commercial to a residential. We have some residential builders interested. Main concerns, I was trying to get feedback from them. One was they want it ready to go. They're busy, they have projects going on, they want it ready to go. So I think the buildings, it would be nice if they could, the city could tear those down. They work backwards, they don't look at a, how much an acre, they're looking at how many homes or condos can I get on the lot? And they work backwards from there. So they're looking at their profitability. Another one is the Houghton School. They are, the school is tearing down Houghton School, so that came up, you know, and I think that if the city took that on, it just makes it easier for, you know, we can come in, the buyer can come in, it's all ready to go. So those are the things that I'm hearing from buyers and from the builders around here. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Burgoyne?
I would like to add this to the discussion items at the end so that we can talk whether we're interested in tearing it down.
Okay. Why don't you just bring that up under reports and other announcements? Any other questions? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think we're, no, we're all set.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
There any other questions? Well, please keep us in the loop.
For sure.
Appreciate your time this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have crime mapping. Chief Rennick, are you issueer? You were in the House this evening. Please come forward.
Hello. I wanted to update the council on something that's very exciting within the police department that we just started with the help of Chris Schonk, our IT person. He brought this to my attention, and I didn't realize that this was even available until he brought it to my attention, but what crime mapping is, is a program that shows on a map where crimes occur within the city, within the community. There's several other departments that are currently connected with crime mapping, but this will be a first for the city of Saline. What happens when you, what we're going to do with this is we're going to have a link on our website, which will give you the connection to this, and this will automatically come up like, like it's come up here tonight. It automatically defaults, as you can see midway down underneath crime types, it says nine crimes between 526 and 61. It automatically defaults to a week, so you'll have a week's worth of data. You can go in there and change that up to six months, so you could actually have six months' worth of data on there. But if we did that at this point, I mean, there'd be just dots all over the place. We have 14 different crime types that we're, that we're tracking, and what those are is arson, assault, burglary, disturbing the peace, drugs and alcohol offenses, drunk driving, fraud, homicide, motor vehicle theft, robbery, sex crimes, theft, vandalism, vehicle larceny, weapons, and then when there's more than one crime at one location, you'll see the number, like there were three plus, there were three incidents at that location. For the dates, like I said, once again, you can go anywhere between one day, if you want to find out what happened today, what happened Sunday, you can put that one date in there, up through a total of six months. And then another thing that's nice is there's address in there, and you can actually punch in your own personal address, and with that, you can find out what's happened within 500 feet of your house, within a half a mile of your house, within one mile of your house, and within two miles of your house, and it will show that within a circle on there. As a matter of fact, let's, let's see if we can, if we can do that. There's, somebody, I tried this with Mr. Campbell's residence, but there was so much crime at that address.[534.87][534.87](laughter) Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't supposed to tell him that.
Detroit City Hall.
Let's do City Hall. And of course, it pulls up the data to make sure you've got the right stuff, and there, within one mile of City Hall, these are the crimes that happened. And what you can do is you can actually, of course, you can make this bigger so you can get a closer view of it, and it will just show exactly what happened within that area. If you wanted to, or take this out a little bit, and then say, we're interested rather than in one mile of my, of this City Hall, we want to know now what's happened within two miles, it will now expand it. As you can see, there's a couple more crimes that showed up there. You have, you have the capability of zooming out into other areas as well, and then the other thing that's really nice about this is other agencies sometimes come into our community, Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department and Michigan State Police, if for some reason, or Pittsfield, if they came in to this area, it'll say, do I want to have only Saline incidents or do I want to have some of those other ones on there as well? So you can choose which agency you're looking at. One other nice thing about this is it allows you to, it allows you to receive crime alerts up here at, up top. What you can do is you put your home address in there and you say, I'm interested in what happened around my house, and it will automatically send you emails to your email account showing what's happened near your house of one of those 14 different crimes. And you can also specify if you're not really interested in DUIs, as an example, drunk driving, you can eliminate that so you don't get an email for that. And I tried this out for the last, this has been live now for a week within the city, and I had this set up so it sends me everything within two miles of City Hall. And every day, I get a, I get a little email saying, this is what happened, and it shows it in graphical form. You want to show them what that report looks like, Chris?
Sure. The trend here?
Yes. Now, here's a trend report of what the, what the reports between 526 and 61 look like, and, you know, certainly the amount of them, the smaller the piece of the pie, the less of them there that there are. You can also do a summary report, if you want to go back to the other one. And I believe it's, I don't know which is the summary. Detailed report, that's it. So now you do a detailed report, and what that does is that will list it in date format of what's happened during that time period. And then if you want, you say, well, you know, that's, that's nice by date format, but I really want to see what it's like by how many of each crime you have. You can just go up and click on description there down below, and up one, up one, there you go. And what it'll do is it will then sort them by description, so it, I don't think I don't need to get it.
Yeah.
There you go. So it puts all of them together. And so this is, this is a great tool that is transparent for our citizens, and we're excited about it because people will get more information this way, and they can have a better clue of what's happening within the city. It was a very, very low-cost item, $300 for a year, and there's no work on behalf of the police department. They automatically draw this from our records management system. But are there any questions, anything I can answer for you at this point?
This is great, chief. Let's start at the end with Mr. Girbaugh, then we'll. We'll go to Mr. Rhodes.
Just real quick, so is this bringing in all our crimes that are reported, so whatever we have recorded?
Of those 14 crimes, it will bring those in, and they'll be made available, it doesn't bring in the other ones, only those 14. And as a matter of fact.
Those categories.
We can go back to that real quick. Crime types. There's, there's the crime types that it will bring in, and if you want to, if we want to show them all as an example, if Chris now unchecks several of those or just clears them all and just, they'll automatically drop off the map.
But this would have the full report of all crimes reported in the city of Saline during?
Of these 14 crimes.
Of those 14.
Yes, just those 14 crimes.
Can you drill down on the description to get more information, where you had down that list?
Yep, what you do is you click, you click on the one item, and it'll bring it up. Vandalism, it tells you the case number, where it happened. They do not give exact addresses, and of course, you don't want exact addresses.
Right, right.
So it just gives blocks, MDoP, property damage, but it, it won't give you more than that. I mean, this is as much as it will give you. And then if you want to know how close am I to this location, and you put in your address, it'll automatically tell you that as well. And then Chris also put in some police links, so if you click that, it'll take us, I believe, to our police page, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, there's a Department Facebook page in Crime Stoppers as well.
And so the categories we've selected are consistent with the other communities around us?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a national program.
Okay.
Mr. Rhodes?
I wanted to compliment both of you on, on bringing this together. I had a question on what initiates an entry onto the system. Say there's a disturbing the peace, and officers go out, but no tickets or anything are issued. Does that still get a case number and gets entered on here?
Yes. What this is, is this is only cases that have been approved by a supervisor. In other words, if Officer Snook went out today and took a disturbing the peace, but hasn't finished it yet, that won't show up until it's been approved by a supervisor because they want to make sure it's a legitimate crime that has occurred, and then it would show up on the map. And the nice thing, like I said, you can go back six months, so let's say you heard, you know, a couple of weeks ago, something happened, you can put in a couple of weeks' ago's address, or a couple of weeks' ago's dates, and find out exactly, yeah, I mean, as an example, you put in February through, let's put in something different there, yeah. March 13, apply. And all of a sudden, wham, you can see, and if you use, yeah, wrong way. Even the IT guy is wrong. This is great. And so you'd be able to find it that way.
So do almost all of the calls that officers go out on get approved by supervisors? And so does this pretty much represent 99% of the calls?
It'll be, yeah, it'll be probably 90 to 95% accurate at the time that you look at it. All of the, all of the reports from today will be approved by tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Are there any additional questions? Mr. Burgoyne?
So does the Sheriff's Department also do this? So if you ask for two miles to include some of Saline Township, and two miles would also include some of Pittsfield, like, you know, the corner of State Street probably would be included, would some of their activity show up?
Yes. As a matter of fact, if you, if you leave the filter off for the city, you'll see some of the Pittsfield stuff because it's considered a Saline address. So anything that's considered Saline will show up on the map, and then you can narrow it to just to the city. One of the things that Chris just clicked on, clicked on is choose your agency. As you can see, there's California, Minnesota, I mean, there's hundreds of agencies that belong to. If you're going on a trip, and you, and you want to check out that city before you go, you can click on that, and you can find out what crimes are happening in that city as well. That's, that's all available to anybody who gets a link to this page.
And do the other communities, like the Sheriff's Department for Saline Township and Pittsfield, do they have the same 12 categories, or do they have different categories?
If they're associated with crime mapping, they have the exact same categories. If they're associated with somebody else, they may show up something different. I know in the Ann Arbor Observer, their magazine that they put out on a monthly basis, they have, I believe they have a different crime mapping system, so it's not crime mapping itself. So they may have some other ones on there, but from the ones that I saw on there, the ones that I saw, they were the same.
And what, these are 12 types of items that are included. What are the types of items that are not included?
I don't know if we have that much time. I mean, because there's, there's probably 150, 200 different incidents that we, that we take numbers for. So there could be a multitude of incidents that aren't in there, but some of those are very minor and probably people really don't care to know that information. This is like the major stuff, the stuff that people are concerned about, and that's why.
So murder, armed robbery, those types of things would be included?
Yes, oh yeah, they're, they're all there. And like I said, with the filters, you can filter them on and off. If you don't want to know about burglaries, you just take the burglary one off, and it doesn't show up.
Chief, if I may, real quick, to piggyback on Mr. Burgoyne's question, he referenced Saline Township and the Sheriff's Department and Pittsfield Township. Of course, Saline Township and Pittsfield Township aren't covered by the Sheriff's Department, excuse me. Do those public safety entities, public, or Pittsfield Township Public Safety and Michigan State Police, do they also utilize this service?
Well, I, we'd have to go up, we'd have to go up the agencies and look at it, but I, okay, as he's drawing out, as a matter of fact, zoom it out. You can see, that's, that's the Ann Arbor area, and that's only, that's only a week's worth of data. But yes, there's, yep, Ypsilanti uses it, Ann Arbor uses it, it must be, the Sheriff's Department must use it as well. State Police, I don't know, is Michigan State Police one of the agencies? I don't believe so, because they're not, they're not in Clemeth, right?
No.
Yeah, Michigan State Police, so Michigan State Police would not be on.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief or for our technology support coordinator, Mr. Schonk? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you. And if I can get Chris to carve out just a few seconds of his time tomorrow, this should be live on our website tomorrow.
Excellent, very good. It's a great resource. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Okay, we come now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items?
Mary Hess, 600 Kendeberry, and that is regard to C-14-121, 122, 123, regarding the EDC, the TFA, and the LFA. I noticed in the minutes of being proposed and the budget that there were seven members absent at the meeting of the EDC budget. There were five members absent from the LFA, seven members from TFA. And I don't think there's more than 12 members, if that, on any of these commissions, and I'm wondering if there was quorums, and hopefully that the people that have been appointed are literally coming to make themselves present because on the budget, it was important information of which you're addressing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any other citizen comments?
I'm going to count on hearing from the two Marys. Mary LaRona's 373 West Bennett. I wanted to speak on the Bennett Street property acquisition. I've hoped for many years that this piece of property could be purchased because the opportunity doesn't come our way very often to have a really nice, convenient piece of land that's adjacent to our parks, which would connect the two parks. So we have a large grassy area for festivals. We can easily close off Bennett, East Bennett Street with minimal inconvenience to anyone, and then we would have a really big area for some sort of event with Henny Field and the Depot property being combined. So I think this is a great opportunity, and I hope council will vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Timothy King, 1573 Molly Street, Ypsilanti Township, precinct delegate in Ypsilanti Township. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having the proclamation on the agenda this evening. I, just about a half hour ago, I just got done talking with the Manchester Village Council and their president, Mrs. Valencourt. She grew up in the village of Willa Run, and they're, they're pretty excited about this, about this memorial. And since the last time I approached the Saline City Council, we have Yucca on board and the Washtenaw County Farm Bureau. I just wanted to, again, thank you for having this on the agenda this evening.
Very good, thank you. Are there any other citizen comments?
Bill Kinley, 843 Ace Gray Drive in Ann Arbor. I own some downtown properties in Saline. I'm here to speak about a discussion item today. It is an agenda item for vote, but it's about the downtown parking. As you're all aware, that's been an issue in some of the lots, particularly parking lot number one, for many years. I'm here to encourage council to allow occasional enforcement of the parking restriction in downtown Saline. By occasional enforcement, I don't mean to do something or to have the chief, who I know is limited in resources, and is very encouraging of people following the rules in downtown, from discouraging shoppers. So I would not encourage three hours and one minute, or three hours and five minutes and get a ticket. My suggestion in the past has been and will continue to be to mark cars or somehow note cars sometime in the morning, note them again in the afternoon when there have been four or five hours intermediate time that's clearly not a shopper. Well, we have primarily our downtown property owners, business owners, employees, and tenants as a group that are violating, particularly in parking lot number one, but certainly in the other parking lots as well. I think that some enforcement, occasional enforcement, would discourage those folks, my own tenants, and I'm not sure all of them follow this religiously, but in all of my own leases, I try to enforce, but certainly have in the lease, that they're not to park in city spaces, either in front of stores or in the city parking lots. There are plenty of free spaces that go unused downtown. The McKay Street Lot is 10 to 20% occupied most of the time. McKay Street itself is free. The Henry Street Lot is free. The city has done a great job of providing adequate free parking all day long for the tenants, employees, and shop owners. I would encourage council to allow some enforcement to occasionally go forward to discourage the folks that are taking up the spaces that we all want our clients and customers to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. The additional public comments. No, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. I believe, Mr. Burgoyne, you'd like to remove the first motion to approve the minutes and synopsis of the May 19 meeting, and then there was, was there a subsequent motion you'd also like removed?
Items C Minutes, C-14-122, C-14-123, C-13-89.
Okay, those will appear in new business, all four of those motions. And just to confirm, and of course, Mr. Councilmember Rhodes and Councilmember Girbaugh could also back me up on this, because there was a comment made during the citizen comments about minutes from the last LFA, TFA, and EDC board meetings. There were quorums present at each one of those meetings, albeit just barely, but there were quorums. And on occasion, like with many of our boards and commissions, we do sometimes struggle to get people to attend, but I thought those were good substantive discussions. And again, there were quorums present at each one of those three economic board meetings. If there's nothing further, I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, noting the four motions that will be removed and placed under new business.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the public hearing, business item 14-124. This is General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2015. This first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 23, 2014 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough regarding the General Appropriations Act of fiscal year 2015.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tahr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Girbaugh. Deputy Treasurer McDonough, do you care to make any comment at all?
Um, I'm not good.
We've had extensive discussions on, on our millage rate and our budget, so I doubt that there are any additional comments, but if there are, we're happy to entertain those. No? Okay. Then it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Tahr, seconded by Councilmember Girbaugh, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move, we move on now to the second motion, which will be a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. This public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would wish to speak on fiscal year 2015 budget?
Move to close.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahr. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, public hearing's closed. This will now be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution as submitted adopting the General Appropriations Act budget for fiscal year 2014, 2015, providing for a general operating millage of 14.127 0 mills, including the funding requirement for fire protection, the 2001 street debt millage of 0.1187 mills, the 2004 street debt millage of 0.4019 mills, and the refuge millage of 1.6324 mills, for a total mill levy of 16.28, which is unchanged from fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rhodes. Is there a discussion? Mr. Girbaugh?
I'm glad that we're able to keep the millage the same again this year as we anticipated last year. We thought we might have some issues coming forward, and I think we've done a well job of using the funds this year and trying to get forward on some of the items that have been postponed as a result of the recession, and I'm looking forward to hopefully seeing some more productive items coming out of our city as we go into the new year.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Other additional comments? Mayor Protem Tahar.
Yes, thank you. I would second Mr. Girbaugh's comments and also add kudos to staff for looking for every opportunity to make the money go as far as possible this year. I think they've done an excellent job.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Well, let me just say this, and I think this is indicative, my friends. This was the first budget since our city manager joined city staff in 2008, where staff was able to produce a balanced budget before coming to city council. And that is a result of many years of hard work and strategic planning, but it's also a result of some really tough choices and decisions that we made last year. And to echo Mr. Girbaugh's comments, this new budget, while providing a nominal amount to our fund balance, allows us to invest in some really critical areas, like infrastructure. We have a large project on North Ann Arbor Street, a small but visible and important project on South Lewis. This budget, well, a small portion of our general fund budgets are allowing us, for the first time in many years, to hire two new individuals at our Department of Public Works. We talk a lot about preventative maintenance. Well, the belief and the value of preventative maintenance can only occur if you have men and women on the front lines doing the day-to-day tasks and chores that are required. I'm also very pleased, because I outlined this in my State of the City address back in January, this budget also will bring back next summer the very popular and very successful rec-on-the-go program. So we have made some important decisions, some tough decisions in the past, and this balanced budget, which allows us to invest in some critical areas, is a direct result of those choices. So I appreciate the comments made by Mayor Protem Tahar and Councilmember Girbaugh, and I strongly encourage the approval and adoption of this budget. Other additional comments? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving and adopting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, and the motion carries. We move on to old business, item 14-18. This is revised water and sewer rate resolution. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 23, 2014 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough, and to approve and adopt or not to adopt the revised resolution for water and sewer rates effective June 1, 2014. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Mayor Protem Tahar?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. McDonough, do you care to comment at all?
Um, just to say that, you know, the only change was the typo in the original.
Are there any questions for staff?
You might want to clarify that.
Why don't you say that one more time up here for the record, Ms. McDonough?
Okay, the only reason for the revision is there was a typo on the resolution that was passed on January 13th. The rates, based on the rate study that Tetra Tech did in December 2013, are, still stand. So that was the only reason.
Very good. Thank you, Deputy Treasurer. Are there any comments or questions? And there's no discussion, okay? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving and adopting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. The first new business item, which was removed from the consent agenda, will be a motion to, it's C-Minutes, excuse me. It'll be a motion to approve the minutes and synopsis of the May 19, 2014 meet, regular meeting as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Girbaugh. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Keenig. Mr. Burgoyne, I know you had a comment or question, sir.
Right. I thought there was an agreement that when the clerk and treasurer listened to the minutes, it was not as stated in the first draft, so that we needed to change the draft to correct it.
I believe the clerk's office has prepared a response to your inquiry.
Um, yes. The motion was to acknowledge receipt, and that was what was given, but there is no to direct staff or not direct staff. So I left it as it was. If you want that corrected, if you, I can't correct it before, once the draft minutes have gone out, it has to come before council to have it changed. I can't just change it because they've already been submitted to people.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to change it, to make it correct.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Why don't we clarify exactly what we're correcting? I'm trying to remember, is this where I acknowledged for the receipt of the?
Right, and I seconded that.
Right, and we voted on it, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the change we're making to correct it. And then we voted on the second part of it.
No, we didn't vote on the second part.
We didn't vote on the second part.
No, the second part of it was not brought up as a motion or voted, so I'd like the minutes to be correct.
You clear on what Mr. Burgoyne is suggesting, Councilmember Girbaugh?
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Is there a second to Mr. Burgoyne's motion?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
There was already a moved and a second to bring it.
There's a moved and a second to approve the whole minutes, but Mr. Burgoyne is asking for a motion to change. So we'll proceed with the subsequent motion, which is Mr. Burgoyne's motion. It's been moved by Mr. Burgoyne, seconded by Mr. Girbaugh to correct the minutes as outlined by Mr. Burgoyne's statements. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Now we'll go back to the first motion. It's been properly moved by Mr. Girbaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Keenig, to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion?
Well, we should approve the minutes as amended, right?
Correct.
Okay.
To approve the minutes, subject to the correction that you made, offered that Mr. Girbaugh seconded, and that was approved unanimously by those present this evening.
Perfect.
Okay. If there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to our second item under new business, which is also from the consent agenda. This is item C-14-22. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 23, 2014 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough regarding FY15 LFA 1 budget, Sheldon Industrial Park, and FY15 LFA 2 budget, Sauk Trail Business Park, and to approve and adopt the FY15 LFA 1 and LFA 2 budgets as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. To approve and adopt?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Mr. Burgoyne, did you have a comment or question?
Question. On LFA 1, there appears to not be enough capture to provide the bond reserve and the proper resources, and I'm wondering, what is the percentage of capture that is being used, and why isn't this a better budget?
Ladies, Ms. Bennet, Ms. McDonough, do you care to comment at all?
Both LFA 1 and LFA 2 are capturing 100% of the properties allocated, so there's no more to capture. And according to the attorney, Roger Swatz, who I consulted, we have to go back to the debt obligations and adjust those. So there's a street bond, and there's, and a water and sewer bond that we have a debt obligation to. So there is a loan set up between those, from those funds from the LFA, similar to what it is between the general fund and the street fund. That is recommended by our attorneys, because we are capturing 100%.
Okay, so it's just that the revenues just aren't enough, and it's squeezing down?
Yes, sir.
Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Burgoyne?
On LFA number 2, there's actually enough room to repay more debt than the 120 to the general fund and whatever the amount is to streets. So why are we not doing more? We're just doing the same to keep it regular from year to year, or?
Well, as you may recall, when we discussed that repayment back, we were going to allocate those set amounts until which time, when the personal property legislation made it all the way through the vote and everything, and then we would progress on that.
You could have it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments?
Good answers.
Thank you, Ms. Bennet. If there's nothing further, then it's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The next motion is C-14-123. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 23, 2014 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough regarding fiscal year 20, or 15, excuse me, Tifa budget, and to approve and adopt the fiscal year 15 Tifa budget as submitted.
Moved to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Keenig. Again, Mr. Burgoyne, did you have comments or questions, sir?
Question.
Ms. Bennet, if you'd like to come up, or Ms. McDonough. Mr. Burgoyne, please proceed.
Well, in the non-motorized amount, Antifa has been reduced to $25,000, and my understanding is that we're still trying to get more non-motorized paths, especially where some of the sidewalks
have deteriorated. So I'm wondering why not a better amount towards that?
The $100,000 that was always allocated from Tifa to the general fund was generally categorized as non-motorized. And then they, we had the library path last year, which was its own little project, and we had the $100,000 for non-motorized, which kind of has turned into the streetscape project for something along Michigan Avenue from Maple down to Monroe, or the dam, as far as the west side. We, I guess the Tifa Board or the task force decided that they would retain the money and build up a committed reserve on their books. And then when MDOT got around to doing the Michigan Ave project, and we could incorporate it at that time with a grant from the state, we would then pass it along to the general fund.
But I thought there were other grant sources, like the county and so forth, on non-motorized, so that also was a matching, could be used as a matching amount for that.
Okay. I'm unaware of any specific projects identified for non-motor. I know there's a non-motorized plan, but there's no design or specific plan in place that I'm aware of.
Well, I'm aware that the sidewalks next to the cemetery, between the cemetery and the dam and in that direction, have been deteriorated for some time, and that I thought there was supposed to be some effort to get matching funds for that, and that this would be our match for, you know, grant funds from the county or wherever.
And again, I think that they're trying to tie it in when MDOT does the road project. Because we also have the water main that we're going to try to tie in, and then sidewalk and streetscape, you know, just to, you know, make it generic. So, and then we'd get the grant hopefully from the state, and then Tifa would provide the match as well.
But hopefully, we could also get grant from somewhere else.
Okay, well, if it's available, I'm sure we'll pursue that avenue.
And evidently, Mr. Burgoyne, as you may recall, because this is brought up at a past council meeting, is that the city manager is convening a work group with our DPW director, with our Parks and Rec Director, and with some members of our Parks Commission to prepare some draft grant applications to Washtenaw County Parks, in the hope that we can better utilize some county dollars to improve existing facilities, but also to expand on what we have. Are there any other questions? No? Okay. Ladies, thank you very much. If there's nothing further, then it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Tahar, seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Keenig, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The last motion is C-13-89. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 23 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough regarding the third amended FY14 Tifa budget, and to approve and adopt the third amended FY14 Tifa budget as submitted. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Again, Mr. Burgoyne, I believe you had questions or concerns, sir?
Well, my concern continues to be that we're using tax dollars to pay for Woodland Drive, and Woodland Drive has, is not being carried by Tifa. It's in Ready's Industrial Park, was part of the intent of Tifa, and I'm just concerned that this is being pushed off to, onto the taxpayers. So I'm not in favor of the industrial park not paying its way.
Thank you. And again, with all due respect, you've articulated those concerns and those opinions in the past, and that sentiment is not shared by a majority of this board, but we do respect that that is your opinion. Is there anything further? No? Ladies, thank you. It's been properly moved then, and seconded by, properly moved by Girbaugh, excuse me, seconded by Tahar, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, the motion carries. We move on to new business item 14-125. This is the purchase of the Bennett Street property. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 27, 2014 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to authorize or not authorize the city manager to sign all required documents for the purchase of 109 Bennett Street, 18-13-36-455-01, 022, excuse me, and the rear parcel, 18-13-36-455-030, in the amount of $66,224.24.
Moved to authorize.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Councilmember Girbaugh. Mr. Campbell, do you want to maybe briefly go over your memo, and then also maybe touch on the supplemental that you provided to each member of council this evening?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The property that, we'll just say 30 and 22, if that's okay, to abbreviate those numbers for you all, instead of going through the whole parcel number. But these properties are adjacent to the current Depot Museum, and the additional, well, it's actually not additional, it's just corrected, the title commitment, as well as the warranty deed, had a improper legal description, and that's been corrected. So I'm happy to do our best to answer any questions or take any comments.
Any questions or comments for the city manager? No? Okay. Mr. Rhodes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just put my hand up just now. First of all, I wanted to speak in behalf of, obviously, of supporting this particular purchase, because as Mary LaRona stated, it's not often that an opportunity comes up to provide land which will create a linkage between two existing public use areas within our community, and has the possibility of providing a place to have potentially events without necessarily having to close down our city streets. One thing that is not stated in the documents that I didn't see in front of me is that this purchase is being made, and then the land will be leased, I believe, to the Saline Area Historic Society for its use. Is that correct?
That's my understanding of the intent, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional comments? Mr. Girbaugh?
Yeah, I just want to amend that this is a great opportunity for us to actually kind of resolve some problems with the depot, that it gives us direct access to the property, where in the past, we've had to go across leased property. So it resolves some issues of direct access from Bennett Street to it, so that we will always have in perpetuity access to the depot without any concerns over other issues that may happen with the railroad or anything in the future. And the other aspect of, this was something that I think, from the fact that we're selling the property on Monroe Street, which was partly acquired to help that park, and we will be making a profit off that, helps to offset the cost of this. So there's a wash in this, that basically, we're coming out of the best of both worlds with that park and this park. So this is a win-win situation, no matter what we do with it.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Additional comments? Well, I would just, I would just say, and these comments are not going to surprise or shock my colleagues, I would have favored a slightly different approach, and prior to purchasing the property, I would have liked to have seen a Phase 1 environmental done on the parcel. However, that position most likely will not prevail this evening, and I should note that I won't be losing any sleep over that. Like Mr. Girbaugh stated, and like Mary LaRona stated, this parcel will greatly benefit our community, I think ultimately greatly improve the usability and accessibility of our Depot Museum, which is actually one of our city's finer parks. So I just want to be clear, I'm not, certainly not against the acquisition of the land. I would have just favored a slightly different process. However, my office, in conjunction with City Hall, or all the staff at City Hall, excuse me, will work to make this a success, and I think, as Mr. Girbaugh stated, this will benefit the community innumerable. in innumerable ways in the years to come. Are there additional comments? No? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of authorizing the purchase signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, the motion carries. We move on to new business item 14-126. This is American Soy requests for installation of a sewer flow meter. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 27, 2014 memo from Water, Waste, Water and Waste Water Treatment Plant Superintendent Skoll and to approve and adopt American Soy's request for an effluent flow meter.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Mayor Protem Tahar?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Skoll, do you care to comment at all, sir?
Um, sure. Yes, American Soy approached the city about a year and a half ago for an effluent flow meter. As you all know, American Soy produces many different types of beverages with high water contents. And that water has not been discharged at San Gary Sewer yet. American Soy's been charged on the water rates. So this will eliminate the overcharge on the sewer end. It's about, the meter will be purchased by American Soy, will be calibrated and controlled by the city. American Soy has produced, will produce records, production records, so we can verify the accuracy of the meter.
Any questions for Superintendent Skoll? Miss, Mayor Protem Tahar?
Yes, thank you. I noticed in your memo, you said the city has no experience with this kind of meter.
Correct.
Is that this particular kind, or an effluent meter in general?
Effluent meters in general. We don't have any currently in the city. We have hundreds of meters, but just not for this application. And I would add that they're picking a top-of-the-line meter. This is probably a Cadillac when they don't really need it. But it was their wishes to go this route.
Okay, thanks. That anticipated my second question. Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Skoll? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. I believe we have some gentlemen from American Soy. We appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you very much. Are there additional comments? Well, obviously, we appreciate you being in the community greatly. And I think, I suspect that this motion will be approved, and we're happy to accommodate you. Thank you. Oh, please, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add that certainly, American Soy has been great to work with, and we have, again, because it is the first in Celine, again, we're going, doing our due diligence and going the extra, not just a mile, but probably five miles, to make sure, to the best of our ability, that this is going to work and be reliable. And we actually utilized Tetra Tech to do an analysis of this. It was paid for by American Soy, they agreed to that. And so there's built into the agreement, there's stages for the first, I believe it's 60 days, to make sure that it's recording what it's supposed to be recording. So we are, Bob's calling his team, is comfortable as is Jeff Fordice, where his guys will read the meter, Gary Robel, myself, Tetra Tech. So it was a big, a team effort to do the analysis and to bring this forward, as well as American Soy as part of that partnership as well.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. If there's nothing further, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Moved by Rhodes, seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, gentlemen. We move on to our final new business item of the evening, which I'm going to read from the addendum sheet that was provided to you earlier. This is motion 14-128. This is 600 West Michigan Ave rebuild front porch. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 30, 2014 memo from HDC Recording Secretary Royal and to approve or not to approve the request to replace a front porch at 600 West Michigan Ave with an identical-sized porch in similar appearance with either stones or inlay stamped concrete. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Girba?
Yeah, with clarification. Since I'm on Historic District Commission, I think we're missing some wording that was in the original motion that was passed by the commission. Remember, we said something about the brick edging? So that's maintained?
Good evening. Yes, that, unfortunately, the commission hasn't had opportunity to review the minutes because the meeting just happened last week. But there was a, with the inlay, with the stamped concrete option, there was also consideration for a brick border around it. And that border would be made from mostly salvaged bricks from the existing porch, and replacements where necessary. And in conversation with the property owner after that meeting, I believe that was the option that you wanted to go with, where the stamped concrete with the brick border.
Mr. Girba, would you like to offer an amendment or some additional verbiage to the motion?
Yeah, that's, I'm trying to remember how we said the other thing. With request to replace the front porch at 600 West, with an identical-sized porch in similar appearance. How do we do that with brick edging? I don't have my notes there. I got them.
Brick edging and either stone or inlay stamped concrete?
As authorized, yeah, as authorized by Jeff Fordice, if I remember right.
Yeah, there was a review clause in there.
Let me read this back, Mr. Girba. And you tell me if you're comfortable with this, okay? So starting with 600 West Michigan, with an identical-sized porch and similar appearance with brick edging, either stone or inlay stamped concrete, as approved by the Historic District Commission.
I think that's right, yep.
Perhaps the word "and" after edging and before "either."
And brick, with brick edging and "either"?
Either stones or inlay stamped, yeah.
Everybody clear on Mr. Girba's amendment?
I didn't hear the last, just the last little bit of that.
As approved by the Historic District Commission. So there'd be a comma after "concrete," as approved.
Actually, it should be as reviewed by Jeff Fordice.
Yeah, it says that in the minutes.
Why don't we just approve it the way HDC approved it? Because HDC was very specific and included Jeff in their motion. So why don't we just simplify it and just approve it the way HDC approved it?
Page four of the packet we were given has the original HDC.
It's item 1414. I didn't think it was clear on that one.
With a referral to Jeff for approval before final.
All right, Mr. Rhodes, would you be amenable to offering that motion?
That motion would be...
To approve the request to replace the front porch with an identical-sized porch and similar appearance of either stone or inlay stamped concrete with Jeff's approval prior to submitting for final approval to City... Well, it wouldn't be bad. He would take out the last part.
But it's missing the brick edging thing. That was one of the clarifications.
So the mover, all right, so thanks, folks. But it sounds like the mover and the seconder would prefer the motion that we were working on.
And I'll explain the reason why this came to council.
You want to reread that one more time, clerk Royal? All right, let me try rereading it, Mr. Girba. I apologize, folks, but I want to make sure we're accurate and the mover and seconder are comfortable with this. So it would be to acknowledge receipt of the May 30, 2014 memo from HDC Recording Secretary Royal and to approve or not to approve the request to replace the front porch at 600 West Michigan with an identical-sized porch in similar appearance with brick edging and either stone or inlay stamped concrete as approved by the Historic District Commission. You good with that, Mr. Girba?
That's fine.
Mr. Rhodes, you're comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay, very good. Mr. Royce, did you have anything else to comment on, sir?
Uh, no, I think that covers it.
No? Mr. Girba, I think you wanted to explain why you recommended the additional verbiage?
Yeah, the rea, well, partly because that's the way the HDC approved it. But the reason this is becoming, is coming before us here on the council is because there are special easements on this property when it was originally zoned in its appropriateness. And maybe Mr. Campbell could agree to this. But it, part of the easement agreement actually had it where it had to come to council and not just Historic District Commission to be approved. So we reviewed this. And there was some back and forth on the porch in terms of what and how it was done because it's so important that it's, originally was Henry Ford was the one that moved it and did that. But, and I think that was the reason for the easement language, the way it was written. So just wanted to clarify, that's why it had to come another step further.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Girba. Are there any additional comments? Any subsequent discussion? No? Okay. Then it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Girba to approve, noting the additional verbiage. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to discussion items, commission, committee, or task force reports from council members? Mr. Rhodes?
Environmental Commission had a meeting in between our council meetings. And we have established that the Environmental Commission will have a presence at the third, at the farmer's market downtown on the third Saturday of each month. We will have members there and literature staffing a table under the Environmental Commission's pop-up tent. We're also continuing to work on more public service announcements. And we are working with the group that I believe is going to present to us at our next council meeting, seventh-grade science students and their water sampling efforts within the city environments. And we're pleased that they have taken that initiative. And the Environmental Commission has provided them with information and with certificates of accomplishment. And that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. That's excellent. Ms. Cibok Keening?
From the Parks Commission. It is time again for the Green Thumb Awards. And nominations are being accepted for residential and businesses for those people who have taken great care in providing exterior landscaping that beautifies our city. Nominations are accepted from June 1 until July 31. So there's plenty of time to go driving around and look for those plantings. There should be a link to an online form on the Parks webpage. And we look forward to having a lot of submissions so that you'll see the signs out on the lawn. Everybody who's nominated gets a sign. And it's a great program.
Indeed it is. Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any other commission, committee, or task force reports? No? How about reports or other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
The design team of Celine Main Street Group, at their last meeting, reviewed some new ideas for potential changes, improvements to Merchant Plaza. And those are under continuing review and will be eventually submitted to the city by Mr. Campbell. And last Friday, I attended a meeting in Lansing, Michigan Municipal League Economic Development and Land Use Committee. And that's a group of representatives from probably 15 different municipalities around the state, where we have, are given an opportunity to review pending or proposed legislation and to provide our input as to supporting it in one way or another, or modifying it. And a couple of them that came up this time that might be of particular interest here. One of them has to do with form-based codes. And as we know, we have, we have that here in Celine. But apparently, some municipal attorneys don't believe that the state's ordinance allows for form-based codes. And so they're going to clarify that because we want form-based codes within the state. So that's going to work its way through. That's Representative Shore has started that one. And then Representative Cole has, is heading up a group looking at the TIFs and the DDAs. Apparently, there are 10 different TIF acts within the state at the present time. And an effort is underway to try to figure out a way to combine those into just one or two different kinds of TIFs. And also potentially look at the possibility of doing some kind of sharing of those increased tax revenues after a certain period of time. So say if a TIF, a tax increment finance authority is set up this year, it might capture 100% of the participating entities for 15 years. And then after that, there might be some graduated increase of sharing of those increased revenues with the groups that are part of that, that TIF. That's got a lot of work to be done on it yet. There are a lot of potential impacts and issues that need to be dealt with. And then another one was the public notice. There's an effort underway to move away from having to have written public notices in printed paper because there are relative, there are fewer and fewer of those available on a regular basis. And so the current proposal has, for the next few years, the requirement to put a public notice twice in print and once online. And then after five years, once in print, twice online. And then after another five years, there'd be no requirement to do printed public notices. They'd all be online. That's probably the things that are of most potential interest to us here in Celine.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate your participation on that subcommittee. It's very important. Mr. Burgoyne, did you have a report or other announcement?
Yes, on the Monroe Street property. In light of the feedback from Darby Colano about developers wanting to have a development-ready site, I thought it would be probably pertinent for us to think about whether the city council is in favor of that. And in thinking about it after she spoke, turns out I don't think I'm in favor of it. What I would be in favor of is to allow them a clause in the purchase agreement that would keep the, keep them harmless if they're unable, through some impediment, to remove the buildings. I'd rather have the developer take it the way it is and remove it. But I, it, we did get some feedback today, and I thought it might be good for us to just think about it.
Absolutely. And actually, from speaking with Mr. Campbell, Mr. Burgoyne, I think this item will be added to the discussion portion of our agenda at our next meeting to talk about the, in greater detail and substance, our, the most recent offer that the city has received. But I appreciate you bringing the issue up, and I would encourage my council colleagues to think about it. And I certainly will over the course of the next few weeks. Initially, I share your sentiments, which is I do not want to incur additional cost at the moment in tearing down the two structures. And, you know, understanding that they're going to be up for at least the finite future, I would be willing to work with the developer and maybe negotiate the price if something tangible were to come along. But again, I would encourage my colleagues to think about that, and that will be added as a discussion item at our next meeting. Any other reports or announcements? Mayor Protem Tahar?
Just an additional comment about that. If we're going to be talking about it, could we have some, I'm not talking about a deep, detailed study, but some information about what would be involved in tearing down the buildings?
Certainly. It could probably be done in the next two weeks.
Just a general, just a general sense. I don't, I'm not...
Cost, et cetera.
Cost, effort.
Yeah, we have those. They're a couple of years old. But you may recall, initially, the city was, the intent was to remove those structures. And then, once the city employed a, contracted a realtor, the decision was made to sell as is. So, and at that point, price reduction in, as far as that was put into, taken under advisement when they brought the proposed selling price. And so, and maybe it still needs to come down. I don't know that. But, but, so, yeah, that, we should build a couple of something.
Okay, very good. Any other reports or announcements? I have one about a meeting I am trying to coordinate. And so I would ask that you all check your calendars. You may recall, I believe it was in the late spring, early summer of 2012, my predecessor, now State Representative Gretchen Driscoll, hosted a forum, a joint meeting here in council chambers with city council, the chamber board, the Main Street board, the downtown merchant board, because that was still in existence at that time. I believe the library board was also present, and the school board. And I found that to be beneficial. But in terms of moving forward, I think there's greater benefit in having smaller group discussions with a little bit more of a focused agenda. So over the past week or so, I've been in contact with Bob Rosenberg from Main Street and Art Trapp from the Celine Chamber to talk about doing a meeting where the discussion would be exclusively business retention and economic development. And both of those gentlemen thought it was, it was important to have that discussion and dialogue, thought it could produce some tangible things for our community. And we sort of have settled on a tentative date, which I'll be able to confirm later this week, and wanted to see if you all would be available. It will be on the 23rd. Again, that's tentative at this point of this month. So that's three weeks from today, Monday. Here in council chambers, we would host it probably at around 6:00. Here in council chambers, we would host it probably at around 7:00 PM. I would very much appreciate your participation if you're available.
I can do that.
You can do that. Mr. Gierbaugh, do you think that works for you?
Yeah, Mondays are fine.
Okay. No?
No.
Okay.
Fine.
That's fine for you. Mr. Burgoyne, you think that'll work? Okay. I will, I'm still waiting to hear back from Bob and Celine Main Street. Once I do, I'll be able to confirm something to you electronically via email, and then Bob and Art and myself, in conjunction with our colleagues and respective boards, will work on identifying some agenda items and then get you an agenda, of course, in advance of the meeting. And just to be clear, those participating will be the chamber board, the Main Street Board, ourselves, and then we'll also be sure to invite some other members of the business community as well, and then evidently, it will be an open meeting, so any citizen of the public who wishes to attend and participate would be welcome to do so. Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, we do have a very brief agenda meeting, it may be a five-minute meeting, on the 30th. And if we're going to all convene here on the 30th, why couldn't we just have our very brief meeting to take care of the water and sewer technicality, which will go pretty quick?
Right.
And then do this, maybe at 7:30.
Would that date work for you, Ms. Tahar?
Yes.
Okay. I will, I will offer that to Main Street and the Chamber. There are no guarantees that that will work, Mr. Burgoyne, because in our discussions, that was sort of the date we settled on after I proposed probably four or five initially. But I will ask the question and confirm that, and that does make sense, and if that works for the other two boards, we could certainly do that. But one way or the other, I will confirm probably by the end of this week via email. Okay? Are there any other reports or announcements? No, then we move on to downtown parking. I asked Mr. Campbell to do, to discuss this matter a little bit this evening. Obviously, as you all know, this is an issue that comes up rather frequently, but in talking to some of our citizens and business owners, I think quite frankly, we've reached the tipping point. As you are well aware, we have a policy in place, but a policy that's not enforced. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Campbell, if he would like to include Chief Rennick. I would welcome that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think as most, if not all, council members are aware, this comes up time and again to discuss whether the city should or should not enforce the parking requirements in the downtown parking lots. And so there's many pros and cons and such. You may recall from the last one, which I believe was initiated shortly after Chief Rennick began, I believe, and he has been diligent, and I won't steal out of his thunder because I'll let him talk about what he's been doing, but he has been diligently working to try and get compliance, to free up some of those spaces. But in the last few weeks, been hearing some rumblings, if you will, and then certainly some, received a call, and that's what's kind of initiated this, because we have been attempting to help through education, so folks would not abuse the parking lot. But unfortunately, we've not been able to resolve, resolve the issue, so, chief?
And I agree with Mr. Campbell. What's been happening is, it's kind of like hills and valleys, it would get heated, and then it would cool down, and it would get heated, and it would cool down. We still seem to have a few chronic violators, I guess that's probably the best way to put it, and I'm not sure exactly what to do with the chronic violators. But for the most part, it seems to work very well. I went through all the lots today. The lots that have the unlimited parking, of course, aren't full, probably used only 50 to 60% at most. The one over by the bank actually is even less than that, maybe 15, 20%. The other lots are, especially Lot 1, is probably the most, the most busy, and we do have the chronic violators there more than any. I contacted, you know, business owners, I've contacted people and asked, you know, kind of like the nice way, please don't park there, this is for customers. It seemed to work for a while, but, you know, they keep creeping back in, I guess is the way to put it, and so we do have violators that are violating it, and short of enforcing, and of course, the problem with enforcing is you can't just selectively enforce, and so it's not going to be just Lot 1 that gets enforced, and you have to enforce them all. I heard the gentleman earlier speak about the idea of, you know, sporadically doing it, we can't do that. We either have to enforce it or we don't. And that would include all lots. And the idea that, you know, check it in the morning and then check it in the afternoon, the rule says three hours, that's what we would have to enforce, is three hours. We couldn't choose to enforce four hours, or five hours, or six hours. And so that's, that's one of the things that we're plagued with, is that if we are going to enforce, we're going to have to enforce what's currently posted, and I would gather that there's going to be some very unhappy people. I did get just a very short opportunity before this meeting to talk to Don Terry, who used to be one of the enforcement officers way back when, and he indicated that certainly people were very upset when tickets were issued. So I don't know if that's helping or hurting your decision at this point.
Well, I mean, it's somewhat, this is a slightly different animal, because as I alluded to in my opening remarks, we have a policy. Now, council can change the policy if majority of council wishes to change the policy, but there's a policy in place. The issue is it's not enforced. Well, I come back to a point I've made on numerous occasions in my capacity as a member of city council and in a variety of other boards and entities. If you have a policy and you're not going to enforce it, there's not a whole lot of merit to having a policy then. So again, I, in my humble opinion, I think we've sort of reached the tipping point. We've tried aggressively to educate people, business owners, property owners, shoppers, residents of our downtown, to respect and obey the rules. That apparently has not succeeded. So to me, the natural logical next step is to engage in enforcement. But I welcome the thoughts of my colleagues. Mr. Gierbaugh, I know you and I have talked about this in the past.
Well, yeah, and actually, when we were talking about Tifa, that was been one of the concerns that Chamber keeps bringing up. Even the Chamber leadership has concerns about parking and enforcement. When we talk about enforcing all the parking lots, can't we just designate the three most problem area ones, and then let the other ones be extended parking there? Because that's what we're trying to do, is encourage them to park in the other lots, and not necessarily in the three busy lots.
Well, I guess if I misled you, I apologize. The other lot, there's two lots that don't have any restriction, they can park there longer. But the three lots have restrictions, Monday through Saturday, three hours at a time, from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night.
Yeah, and I remember, it used to be two hours, and we extended it to three hours to allow for that, because then when it went to four hours, it was too long. My concern always has been, we've got a policy, we should enforce it, and the issue though, does become, yeah, people are going to become upset, but Ann Arbor's been successful in it, and the concern here is that we've never had parking, some properties had had property that was able to park on it, and others haven't, and so as a result, they don't want to walk any further than they can. But I don't think we're going to have any other solution unless we begin to do some kind of enforcement.
Mr. Rhodes, do you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, this probably doesn't help with the decision-making process, but I recall when Celine Main Street brought in a consultant and did a market study last summer and fall, and one of the many questions that was asked was, had to do with parking. And I believe 41% of business owners said that parking is a problem, and something like 19% of business customers said parking was a problem. So there's some perception issues there, I think, or maybe it reflects the fact that business owners are always there and shoppers are only there periodically.
Mr. Burgoyne?
I recall reading that, and I think that's accurate, what you said. For a long time, I have thought that it's too hard for people coming through to know the total amount of parking areas that there are. Some of them are hidden away, and I think our signage is not, somehow it's not clear enough. I know that when I drive through Ann Arbor, I see the little blue signs, they're international. If we had like a dozen blue signs pointing to the extra parking, that would help. Another thing that happened is that the city has had opportunities to create more parking downtown, and has taken it in some cases, and in some cases, not. But I think that we should put on our plate creating parking very convenient to the Presbyterian Church Chamber parking area, because I think that's the most crucial one. The other thing that I think is that three hours may be too short in some cases, and I'd rather see it four than three, myself, personally. And I do have a question. If you get a parking ticket downtown, what is the monetary penalty? Is it small and taken care of here at City Hall by a ticketing person? Or do you have to go to court and pay an extra $100 court fee? Or can you pay it online? How, if I get a $15 parking ticket in Ann Arbor, I'm not going to burn down Ann Arbor just for a $15 parking ticket. So if the penalty is not too severe, but enough to cause people to generally follow, I would be in favor of that. So I'm wondering, what kind of penalties do you get the first time, second time, and so forth in parking enforcement? How hard is the person hit with a fine?
I know that our fees are relatively low. I don't have them down to memory, but they're fairly low, and no, you don't have to go to court, you can pay those here.
So it's like $15, maybe?
I think it's even less, I think the first is even less than that.
Well, I would be in favor of enforcing if it's low, and perhaps before enforcing, and extending to four rather than three, because I have heard of some people going into the hairdresser, or some appointment and so forth, and missing that three-hour amount. So I'd be in favor of four. I'd be in favor of really better signage, and for us to put on our plate, how do we create more additional parking, whether it's one or two spaces on the street, or obtain more land or something, to put that as one of our priorities to?
Yeah, I would hope that everyone on the dais would agree with the notion, when it is feasible and when it makes financial sense to continue to explore additional parking in our downtown. And you're well aware of this, Mr. Burgoyne, because of your years of service with the City of Celine, Mr. Gierbaugh, Mr. Rhodes, that we as a council have explored that in the past. It didn't make sense at the time, but certainly something we should be committed to doing in the future. I guess I would ask, maybe Mr. Gierbaugh can comment a little bit, I appreciate you bringing up the signage, because that was one of the issues that was addressed in one of the areas where we might actually have funding related to Tifa and LDFA, to improve some signage, especially related to parking in our downtown.
Yeah, the idea would be to have signage that actually directs you to other parking lots, so that you knew where they actually are, so that if you were in one and go through and it's full, that would direct you over to McKay Street or over to Henry Street. The other idea was to try and redesign, or even rename the parking lot, so you can find them better. And one of the concerns with putting more signs in was, we got a lot of signs, and so we're trying to make sure whatever we put in are effective signs, and not misleading or confusing. So that is one of the things that was appropriated for this coming year, and one of the recommendations by the Tifa Task Force. So I think Mr. Campbell, staff has direction to do that, and so we'll see what comes out of that.
I think one of the biggest things, Mr. Burgoyne, because I think the lot that proves the most problematic would be behind Dan's, behind the Chamber of Commerce. And I can attest to the fact, you go in there at key times of the day, it's very difficult to find a spot. You go into that lot during strategic times, especially when Dan's has a number of customers, and people will circle that lot indefinitely. And I think there are a fair number who do not know that just one block away, there is an often empty lot off of West McKay. So I think signage is absolutely critical. Mayor Protem Tahar?
Yes. Living where I do, I have the opportunity daily to monitor the parking lot on West McKay, which is, for the most part, empty. The Celine reporter truck parks there now, and maybe two other cars. So I, I'm not inclined to say we need to forge ahead and acquire more land for parking. I think we should focus our efforts on moving people into the lots that are not being used before we start thinking about it. I mean, we can think about it, but I wouldn't be in favor of creating more parking lots at this point, since we have at least two that are demonstrably daily nearly empty. Signage, signage can do some of that, but I'm not sure where I, how I feel about enforcement. There's a lot of overhead with enforcement, which we have to take into account as well.
Ms. Seibokanik, did you have any comments, ma'am?
I am in an interesting position, being a tenant and my job at the Chamber. I am there every day to see parking lot one, and having worked at the Downtown Merchants for seven years before that, so I have seen all sides of this issue for many, many years. I'm not sure that I am in favor of enforcement, it is a sticky issue. Signage is critical. I do believe that people just don't know where to park, and I like the universal parking signs myself. You can go into any city and see those signs and know where to go. So I think that this council is thoughtful, and I think we're headed in the right direction. I'd like to know a little bit more, you know, I think there are people here tonight who are going to talk again, and it bears keeping on it.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes, did you have any opinions you'd like to express tonight?
I think also, I'm generally not in favor of enforcement at this point in time, but I also support what you said earlier, in that if we're going to have an ordinance or a policy that says we're going to do something, then we need to do it, or we need to get rid of the policy.
Well, real quick, Mr. Burgoyne, and then I'll, we'll turn it over to you. It sounds like we're sort of split right down the middle in terms of enforcement. What I do hear broad consensus on colleagues, unless I'm mistaken, is that there seems to be overwhelming commitment and desire to forge ahead and improve the signage in our downtown parking lots, which I believe we can, we can work on in the very near future. And, you know, based on Ms. Seibokanik's comments, as well as Councilmember Rhodes, this certainly warrants further vetting and discussion in the future. Mr. Burgoyne?
In terms of the naming of the parking lots and the signs and so forth, I think we have actually spent quite a bit of money on fancy signs and naming them and so forth, and consumers don't really care about that. They just need to know where to go, where there's a spot. So I think as we move forward, I would favor eliminating this number, name, and so forth. I don't care if staff has a number system on it, but, you know, just call it, you know, maybe direction of the compass from the four corners, or maybe tell drivers, you know, if you go that way one block, there's ancillary parking, just drive a block, just tell the driver, as they're looping and looping, waiting for something. So I would be in favor of signs that help the driver, rather than kind of municipal signs that have names and things like that.
I would agree, and I think that's worth future discussion as well. I've lived here my entire life, I've served on council, I've served as mayor, and when people throw parking lot number one, parking lot number three, I have no idea what they're talking about, and I'm not ashamed to admit that. So it's greatly confusing to me, so to your novice who's coming to Celine to patronize one of our restaurants or businesses for the first time, or maybe the second or third, I think it's probably even more confusing. So I agree. Sounds like we can forge ahead with the signage, and maybe have some subsequent discussions about enforcement.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you, chief. Yes, Mr. Burgoyne?
One thing, could we actually get a listing of what the fines would be if they were fined?
Absolutely. Good question. Okay, I think our last discussion item this evening are the non-union contracts, and that was added by Councilmember Burgoyne. So I'll turn it over to you, sir.
I know that this will be coming up next week. I assume it's just a regular agenda, our next meeting, whenever it is, two weeks from now. I assume that's just a regular agenda item. But there was mention that you might want to call an attorney to come in for that. I think just the use of the letter of advice we already have from the attorney, which outlines, pretty much outlines everything. outlines, pretty much outlines everything, I think we can do this on our own and not have the cost of an attorney coming down for that. I don't...
I did talk to Mr. Campbell about that. Do you care to comment on this, sir?
Sure. Well, first, that was the direction, of course, that council gave staff at the last meeting was to invite one of our city attorneys in. Our labor attorney, Mr. Gerard, is not available, however our city attorney, Mr. Smith, is. And then also, just for clarification, it is covered under the retainer, so there's no additional cost for that.
That's a good question, Mr. Burgoyne. Anything further on that? No? Okay. Then that exhausts the discussion portion of the agenda this evening. Again, just to note, the property on Monroe Street will come back as a discussion item. And in the future, downtown parking and enforcement will as well. And I'll make sure that staff keeps us up to date on the progress we make to improve the signage in our downtown parking lots. And I will follow up with each one of you to confirm the date, time, and location, although we'll most likely be here at City Hall for this joint meeting with Celine Main Street and Celine Chamber of Commerce to talk about business retention and economic development.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In talking about signage to help customers downtown and help businesses downtown, I think we, I think the city, over the course of time, has reduced the ability of individual businesses to speak to customers that are driving by. And I think that good, clean form is nice, you know, and colors are nice. I remember when Wall of Fame put up an outlandish color, I wish they hadn't done that at the time. So I'm in favor of things like, you know, generally compatible areas and colors and things like that. But I think the restrictions on the ability of our businesses to communicate to the 30,000 people that come back and forth, I think it's a little too restrictive. Can't we balance it to some extent where they can communicate to the? Because I see 30,000 people going by as a potential plus, you know, that could be a potential customer, especially if you have signage where you can see that there's easy parking, easy on, easy off, that type of thing. I mean, people all the time, businesses all the time locate next to the flow of people all over the place. So, and part of it is getting off and getting back on to that transportation. But the other part of it is, how do the businesses communicate with those? So I think we need to do more in that area.
Well, as you may recall, Mr. Burgoyne, since you're speaking specifically of the sign ordinance, that document was liberalized pretty significantly in 2009. And then at my urging, as well as a number of additional community stakeholders, that policy was looked at again in 2013 and 2014. And Mr. Gierba, if I'm forgetting anything as a member of Planning Commission, please jump in. But the policy has been liberalized and loosened yet again, and I think improved substantially from a business perspective. I should also note that when Planning Commission initiated the process, we had our planner, Doug Luon, compare our policy to a number of other communities of similar size and affluence. And what we found was that ours was one of the most lenient in southeast Michigan. So if I'm missing anything, Mr. Gierba, please chime in.
No, and partly it was comprehensive review with Chamber. So Chamber participated in it, and especially with that. So I think we've met what they're demanding. I think the problem is, it's really how they want to incorporate that now into their own situations.
Does that only include the name signage for the business? Or does that include how the businesses can communicate with the drivers?
Well, I mean, basically, it's the information that you would generally have on a sign. We're not allowing any moving signs or big flashing signs and those type of things that are more distracting to drivers and potentially are just garish. But some of the items that are being allowed are more the items that they want to have allowed. So, I mean, Celine's never gone towards having billboards and those type of things downtown, and we really don't want to go that route.
No, I think some things are...
We have allowed, we have allowed some larger signs and stuff at this point in time, so.
So what happened was the size and shape of the sign and so forth?
Were allowed to be larger, and some were adjusted for that purpose.
We liberalized temporary signs significantly as well.
Like A-frames?
Yep.
Yeah, like this business is having a sale or a special promotion.
So like having rubber balloons or whatever?
Yeah, some of those things are more allowed. The only concern that gets with those is that they start putting them into public right away, and then we become liable for them.
We can get you, though, Mr. Burgoyne, some documentation which shows the changes that were made in both 2009 and 2014, if you'd like to see them. But again, to Mr. Gierba's point, city staff and myself and our planner, Mr. Luon, attended a number of Chamber of Commerce meetings to solicit feedback and insight from business leaders in our community. Of course, Ms. Sebo-Kanek can also attest to that as an employee of the Chamber.
Yeah, I knew that process was happening, but I wasn't sure if it was only on the size and type of the main sign, or it covered other things. It did. Okay, that's good.
I mean, there's other concerns uptown about trees and everything like that, but then we have to balance out the decision between that and how we want our appearance.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Rhodes, I'm sorry.
Just one more comment because of what Councilmember Burgoyne brought up. That is, I'm going to continue to advocate for a road diet through our downtown so that we have just one lane going each direction. Because right now, with two lanes going there, the people on the inside lane couldn't read the signs that they're going by even if they wanted to. And you probably wouldn't want them to because they'd be swaying in and out of their lane. So I think the one wider lane probably in each direction with something down the center, and that would slow down the traffic. It would also allow, which would then allow for more ease of communication between the business owners and those going by. And would also, I think, make our residents feel a little more comfortable about approaching and eventually crossing over Michigan Avenue from one side of town to the other.
Very good. Thank you. If there are no additional discussion items, we move on now to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury. Parking has always been a good issue. When I was on council years and years ago, we had parking meters. Then they took them out, and then we paid for some more parking meters. Now, I don't know if you noticed, but in 2012, 2013, 2014, there is no money for any parking tickets. So there apparently wasn't any tickets issued for the last three years. And to say, well, it doesn't sound nice, and people get offended. The taxpayers paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to provide these parking places for people, to announce where the free parking is, maybe we could add a website or something, but to say, oh, well, people get upset. Screw them. Because that's part of life. That's why it's there. Three hours, if you're going to be there longer, in fact, you know, some people are carpooling. Oh, yeah, just park the car there. We'll go on into Ann Arbor, we'll go to Dearborn, and we'll be back in five hours. Nobody does anything. There's cars in park, I like parking lot, number one. It has snow on it. The cars had snow on it for three days, but no parking ticket. I believe it should be enforced. You want business and people to move. We have two free parking areas that are nice parking areas. We should emphasize where those are. If you're going to be there more than three and a half hours or whatever. But to say, well, it's hard, people will be upset. That's not a good answer. And I appreciate, Mayor, that it's not popular. But it's part of the ordinances of which you swear to uphold as a office holder. One other thing, don't take $50,000 out of the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund to fix the sidewalk by the bridge on US 12. That was suggested a year and a half ago.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any additional citizen comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Timothy King, 1573 Molly Street, Ypsilanti Township. I'm current candidate for Washtenaw County Commissioner, District 5. If I'm elected, I would try to help push whatever I could do on the Washtenaw County Commissioners, along with my friend Joe Mariani, who lives in Ann Arbor, who is running for County Commissioner, District 7, to help Celine with their parking problem. One thing that I would suggest if elected to the Washtenaw County Commissioners would be a parking structure that Celine could make money on, and your Chamber of Commerce may want to look into that. If I'm elected to the County Commissioners, I will, would want to work with you on something like that. I just, I'm just throwing this out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments? No? Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, I'll speak as a citizen also. I wonder if we are always enforcing no parking overnight. If you hear about snow in a car for several days, maybe we're not. So even though we may not always enforce the daytime parking, and we haven't for a while, I think we should always enforce no parking overnight. And if we need to do away with the daytime restriction in order to do that and not, you know, be arbitrary about what we're doing, I'd be in favor of doing away with the daytime and just try keeping it clean overnight all the time. And maybe that might eliminate a few spaces.
Well, like I said, we will have subsequent discussions on the downtown parking issue, but certainly forge ahead with the improved signage. If there's nothing further, we have our next regular meeting on June 16th with a work meeting at 6:30. Our friends from The Ride will be here to discuss public transportation. We then have a regular meeting at 7:30. We have a special meeting on June 30th at 7, which should be very brief, that Mr. Burgoyne referenced earlier. And then regular meetings on July 7 and 21 at 7:30 PM. We already excuse the absence of Councilmember Roth, so at this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn at 9:12 PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protam Tahar. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who say nay, ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned.